Okay, you guys can work on that. We're gonna...
There we go.
I call this meeting to order for February 28th, 2023, regular meeting of the North Adams City Council. This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer?
Here.
Barbo?
Here.
Bona?
Here.
Harpen?
Here.
Obasan?
Here.
Alaskowitz?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
Shade?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Um, please rise for a moment of silence for members. And the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, I guess we can start with the rules of order. Counselor Wilkinson, do you want to cover that?
Sure. Last time we were together, this was referred to general government. General government met, went over a number of changes that people had proposed, and finally came up with and proved the list that you have in your packet. Any changes in order to make it easy, I highlighted in yellow. The rest of it remains the same. This remains the same. Hope everybody had a chance to look it over.
Um, do you want to make a motion to adopt them?
Sure. Move that we adopt as presented.
Thank you.
Is there a discussion? And does everybody have them? And did they get a chance to look at them? I guess that would be a good question.
Well, they all got them. I don't know if they had a chance to look at them.
Okay. Um, discussion? We have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Barbo?
No.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
And Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of the minutes of February 14th, 2023?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Can you not hear us?
What happened to hearing our visitors?
I haven't got that far. It's the next thing after approving the minutes.
Huh?
We haven't gotten to it yet.
Oh, you haven't gotten to that yet?
Nope.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm sorry. We, uh, minutes. We had a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
And Blackmer?
Yes. Okay. Now, we will move on to the hearing of visitors. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. Anyone wish to address the council? Go ahead. Name and address for the record. Two minutes and no personal attacks.
Uh, Robert Cardamino, 173 20th Street. I'd like to address, um, uh, 11-826. I would like to know from the mayor what all these fees are being revised. What are they and what were they and what will they be? And, uh, 'cause I know that some of the fees have already gone up. If you want a, um, a birth certificate or a marriage certificate, it's $10 apiece. And I don't know what other, uh, increases have happened recently. Thank you.
The mayor doesn't set fees. The city council knows. Sorry. Um, anyone else wish to address the council on an agenda item? Moving on, council paper 9513-31, an ordinance to amend Chapter 7, Section 7-11 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams regarding change of permit price postponed from meeting of January 24th, 2023. Uh, Counselor Bona, do you have a motion?
Uh, to postpone till the second meeting of March.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second?
I'll give you an update.
Yes, please.
So at this point, um, I have done everything that I can possibly can on my own. I was given some, uh, some free advice from, uh, the general code office, um, on chain making some, some revisions. Uh, we plan to meet with the mayor, the administrative officer, and the city clerk. Uh, where we're at is all the fees, uh, Mr. Cardamino, just to let you know, these are fees we have discussed for, um, probably two to three years. Uh, we had a spreadsheet. We had all the departments look at this, at their fees. Some were obsolete. Some needed to be updated. There's, we've had numerous meetings on this. The spreadsheet got completed. Now it's a case of making sure the ordinances coordinate with the spreadsheet. In most cases, we're removing the dollar amounts from our ordinances, but it's just not that simple of going in and just erasing a number. Some of the wording has to be changed, too. So at this point, it's going to sort of fall into the hands of the administrative officer to just make sure it's legally appropriate how it's worded. Um, at the end, I mean, it turned into a much bigger project that hopefully all fees, uh, dollar amounts will be easily be able to be seen on the fee schedule. And that's how hopefully, moving forward, it will be. Um, it'll be a much cleaner, uh, way of how it's currently in our ordinances. So that's where we're at. And again, at this point, it'll probably be working more with the legal parts of the administrative officer.
Counselor Harpen?
Um, just a quick question on that. Because I believe it was the end of August, actually, I think it was August 31st, the Public Service Committee did have another meeting regarding, uh, the transfer station and changing the fees up there. Um, specifically, what I would be concerned about was the, the scale rate. Um, I don't think it was going up much, but it was going up. But it was being tweaked a little bit. Um, and also the permit prices were going up $10. So those are still being held off, um...
I don't, I believe we approved those.
Okay. 'Cause I, I, I don't think those went through?
Yeah, I don't know that we've had... I don't know that they... Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, all right. Well, then maybe that's something, you know, if we get much further, then, then yeah, we should probably... I just know in the past, I thought the transfer station stuff sort of moved along anyway, but maybe we held it off thinking we were getting close.
Yeah.
Um, so I'll, I'll confirm if it didn't get passed and we feel we're going to be continuing longer. But, um, but I know, um, I think the transfer station fees last year increased twice within that 12-month period.
It did.
So maybe the last one has not fully gone in. I mean, I know there's departments that are wanting some of these feet needing and wanting some of these fee increases. And, um, I apologize, this just got much bigger than I think we, you know, at least I originally figured, never even thought about the ordinances when we were originally looking at the spreadsheet. So, um, so that being said, that's where we're at. Hopefully, you know, um, we're going to postpone it for another month and, and we'll see, you know, where we're at, at that point. You know, now it's the nitty-gritty of the legal terms.
I, I agree with Counselor Harpen. I don't think those were published and passed.
Okay.
Because they do, they're part of the ordinance, too, and they're their own thing, which we've historically done that every year or two. Um, but I think we, the idea was to combine them. So if not, let's make sure we take care of that part of it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Barbo?
Yes, um, to Counselor Bona, uh, I do not remember the... There was a big holdup with fees coming through from inspection services. Have they gone to finance?
Yes.
Have we seen them? Because I don't remember that we've, any of that's come through to the council.
Um, I'll have to look, but I'm pretty sure I submitted, um, my committee report on that. So I'll have to... It was a short meeting, but it was, um, but I believe, yes, we did have a meeting with building and health inspections.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask that if there is the giant spreadsheet, if it's been updated and we're just figuring out how to, how we legally do this and legally post these things? If you could share, make sure we reshare that spreadsheet with everybody.
I do believe, well, I do know, um, the mayor's, um, what's the official title? Your...
Executive Assistant.
Thank you. Executive Assistant, um, actually put together, compiled this updated spreadsheet in a pretty, um, clean format, so...
If we could just make sure we get that.
Just a comment on that. That was compiled by our office, but it needs to be verified by the Finance Committee, which I think you've done. Correct.
Yeah. I think a lot of, well, what was compiled is she took the spreadsheets, the various spreadsheets that each committee went through, and some of the, some of the committees and some of the departments had their spreadsheets in different formats. So she put them all, so at least it was consistent, um, where you can see some of the old fees, the new fees, some of the new things, um, some of the things that were eliminated. Uh, but that, that has been put together. So that will again come back to Finance Committee, you know, for a final approval.
Okay, but isn't that part of what we're going to pub, we're going to do into, in the second meeting into February?
Yes.
Okay. But also, yes, can we just make sure that the council gets it to look at?
What we're trying to do before we approve, it's hard proven the schedule, the fee schedule, when the ordinances, you know, have different numbers in them. So we need the, the ordinances are going to change, and a lot of them are going to say, refer to the fee schedule. So if we say right now, we put these new numbers and just say, here's the fee schedule, and the ordinances have different numbers, um, I don't know which one supersedes, but...
Well, I don't, I'm not talking about getting it out there, publishing it, getting it to the public. I'm letting, saying, suggesting that we let the rest of the council know
Okay, yeah.
what they're going to be. That way, if they have questions, they're prepared.
Sure.
I don't want them to, to get it on the Thursday or Friday before we're going to try and do this.
I think we can, I mean, it, it should be mostly updated. As far as I know, I'll make sure a copy gets out to the council this week.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? This is a, a motion is to bring it back to the, postpone till the second meeting in March, which would be March 28th. Roll call vote.
Barbo?
Yes.
Barbo? Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
And Blackmer?
Yes. Motion passes. Council Paper 11,790, an ordinance to amend Section 10 entitled Special Regulation of Chapter Z of the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams by inserting in numerical order therein the following Section 10 dot 13. This was passed to a second reading and published as required by law. Do we have a motion to adopt?
To adopt. Second.
Counselor Wilkinson and Counselor Alaskowitz. Discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Barbo?
No.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
No.
Obasan?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Uh, seven yeas, motion carries. Council Paper 11,790-2, an ordinance to amend Section 3 entitled Building Code by inserting after Section 3 dash 49 dot 7 the following Section 3 dash 50 dot 1 through 3 dash 50 dot 3. This was voted to pass to a second reading and published as required by law.
Move to adopt. Second.
Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Alaskowitz. Discussion? Counselor Harpen?
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody, the last time we met and we discussed this, we did say that the definitions that were in Section B affect what is in Section A. So anything in Section A, which is just basically, it's the building code ordinance section, right? Um, we originally thought that we would be able to just go ahead and make a change to that if we needed to. We determined in our last meeting, I, I believe we all determined together, that that would not be possible.
That is correct.
It would have to go back to the planning board.
That is correct.
Correct. Okay. So my, my question is, throughout the, all these hearings and 24 meetings that we had...
Twenty-five now.
Twenty-five meetings that we've had. Um, there has been some discussion recently from counselors stating that this is, you know, this is a start. It's not going to be something that's going to be, uh, not tweaked along the way if we run into issues. Um, and I do think it's important, if we do want to stand by that and we do want to tweak things, um, and we want to do it easily, then maybe we should take the definitions and put them in Section A. Also, not take them out of Section B, but maybe just take the definitions, put them in Section 2A, and that way, if something happens with the building codes or if there's issues with the building codes that we think that we would like to tweak a little bit here in, here and there, we would be able to do that as a city council, and we would not have to go back to the planning board.
Okay, one thing, we'd have to redo the posting. It would have to be, both of them would have to be republished because they're drastically changed by taking out the definitions of one and putting it in the other. Secondly, I don't know if the wherewithal is to not have the planning board involved, and I guess that kind of, um... Right now, we'd go back to the planning board. We'd have a joint public hearing. I think the problem with the joint public hearings is people don't want to give up another night of their, for another meeting. But, um... I... Are you making a motion?
I already did.
Okay, so Counselor Wilkinson made a motion, and there was a second. Is it, are you making a motion to amend?
I would make a motion to amend, um, Section 2A, um, to add and, add the section of definitions to Section 3 dash 5. Oh.
Right, but if they're still in the original, it doesn't matter. We'd still have to bring it back to the planning board. You can't delete it. So there's a motion on the table. Is there a second for the amendment?
I'll second.
Is there discussion on the amendment as amended? Counselor Harpen?
Okay, so I just want to make sure that I understand, because in the last meeting, both you and Counselor Bona said that this would need to go back to the planning board if the definitions are not part of Section A.
Yes.
Okay. Prior to me asking the question, I do, do believe you, as well as Counselor Wilkinson, said the reason, one of the reasons why you separated this is because it would be easier to amend Section A. That didn't end up being true, no matter what.
That wasn't, that wasn't...
We have to go back to the planning board.
That was me. That was my interpretation, not Counselor Wilkinson's, just to clarify that.
Okay, I'm sorry, Counselor Wilkinson, it wasn't...
And then we went around and I said, oh, okay, that's, yeah, I misunderstood.
Okay. So I'm just trying to make it easier, because when things go back to the planning board, we have to have a hearing. A hearing has to be posted for so many days. It's going to be a little bit more difficult to make changes. And, and sometimes when we say it has to go back to the planning board, there are some counselors that say, oh, well, it has to go back to the planning board, so it's going to take a little bit longer. Maybe you would make, you know, wait for three changes to come in or, or not make a small change, because it has to go all the way back to the planning board. So it's just a suggestion. Um, I, I think if, if we could make some changes here and tweak things, and, and people think it's important that we're, this is not a final document and we plan on making some tweaks, that we should be able to do it. I, Counselor Bona did say that his fees are not completed yet, and this is not going to be final for a while. The mayor also stated that she's not going to be able to, to put this in, in, enact it for a while as well. So I'm, I, I do believe there is time to take the definitions and put them in both sections and, and give us the opportunity to make some tweaks if we wanted to. Or if things come up, it would give the council the ability to make the tweaks um, at, at the council level.
Counselor Shade?
Thank you. In my understanding of this piece and what the definitions are, it's imperative that we have the planning board as part of that process, whether we want it to be faster or not. They certainly know those terms far better than we do. So I think trying to pull them out of that process of making those changes doesn't work, even though I would very much like to speed things along and make it easier. When it comes to terms and definitions, we need the planning board as part of that process. They know it better than us. They know the building code better than us. And I think it's really important that they're a part of that when we make those changes. So for me, I think we leave it where it is.
I, I also would like to, I would also question the fact that all of those tweaks and things that we talked about were part of the original thing passed by the planning board, and changing the definitions or moving them out, they were all in my... I remember the conversations started back with the planning board in March, where, you know, they had set ideas on some things. So, um, March of, obviously, last year. Um, there's a, Counselor Bona?
Um, Counselor Wilkinson, through the chair, if he could clarify. Wasn't the last changes, which I understand what Counselor Harpen is saying, but weren't the separation of, uh, that a recommendation that came back from the solicitor?
It did come back from the solicitor, and, um, what he recommended was to split it up because of grandfathering. Basically, if we, we moved part of it back into the building code, somebody can't say once we, if we enact this, that, um, hey, I've been doing this for five years, I'm grandfathered. This eliminates that, because now it's part of the building code rather than part of the change in zoning.
And I say, I'm the one who misunderstood that. I was thinking, oh, by doing that, we could tweak it, and I misunderstood. So, um, that, just to clarify that. Counselor Bona, again?
Yeah, and, um, to the chair again, well, actually, just a comment. Um, at this point, I'm fine with approving what is in front of us. Again, we can change it if we, if we find this becomes a nuisance, if we find, uh... But I think as Counselor Shade said, there's, we shouldn't be just making a point of trying to bypass the planning board if they should be part of it. But if we find, we've already published it. So if we have to republish it now or republish it in a year, let's say a year from now, we realize, okay, this isn't working the way it is, well, then we'd republish it in a year from now. But I think right now, I'm okay with passing what's in front of us. Um, yes, there are still other components that need to be done, but, um, I'd like to see this step passed. And again, if we have to tweak it in the future, we have to tweak it in the future. But we haven't even test-run this one yet.
Counselor Barbo, you had your hand up?
I did. Um, the, Mr. Wilkinson, our Counselor Alaskowitz, brought up the solicitor's opinion, and I'm still, uh, reached out multiple avenues to view that. Um, I believe as a city council, we have a responsibility to view the advice that was given to us by the solicitor. I understand the file was corrupt, therefore it couldn't be forwarded to me.
I was trying to make it prettier, and I'm not very good at that stuff. But just to explain, I had no direct, um, communication with the city solicitor. City solicitor communicated with Administrative Officer Ead and also communicated with, uh, President Blackmer.
No, I didn't.
I, not, not you. Okay, so everything was done through Catherine Ead? And as I said, she forwarded some stuff to me, um, but I'd never had any direct communication with the solicitor.
I want to clarify. The clerk did a follow, the clerk sent it to the solicitor for clarification and review. And then the solicitor gave back comment, I did not know you were looking for it. I thought you had it. Counselor Harpen asked for it, and I was able to, I think I had to send it... I don't know if I was able to send it to you or if I had to have the clerk do it, but I didn't know that you were looking for it, or I would have sent it to you. Um, but the solicitor gave the opinion of just separating out the two, that particular piece, and that was all he really...
Mm-hmm.
I think he maybe moved a comma or crossed out a, a than to a then, or, I don't know. There were some minor grammatical things, but...
And if, Counselor, if you want, I brought, just because I anticipated that question, I brought the, a copy of Catherine Ead's email to me that has what, uh, what the solicitor referred to, and I'll be glad to give that to you before we leave.
I, I understand that. Um, I've, I have been provided that. But I believe as a city council, when we have asked for the solicitor's opinion, it only seems reasonable to me that the city council should see the solicitor's opinion. Um, I don't, I did ask for it at the last meeting. I spoke with you then. I also emailed you, and I just find it to be, um, extreme that I have to put in a FOIA to the mayor, as you suggested, that's the only way to get the solicitor's opinion. Uh, we are the city council. We did ask for the opinion, and I don't understand why it's being, why there's all this challenge in receiving that.
It sounds to me like a lack of communication, or you said there was a corrupted file. I am, sorry, if I had known, I would have sent it to you, because I got it to Counselor Harpen when she asked for it. Um, and I didn't realize that it didn't go out to everybody. I don't... In the future, when we get an opinion back from the solicitor, I'll make sure that the clerk forwards it to everybody. Normally, what happens is the clerk sends it, and then the opinion usually comes back to the clerk and the mayor's office. And then is forwarded to us, but that apparently was missed. I'm guessing it also had to do with maybe people being out of the office due to illness. Again, if you, if I had known, I would have forwarded it to you, and I can't do it right now, because I don't have that email on this phone. Um, we have a motion and a second. We also have an emotion to amend and a second. So first, we need to mo, vote on the amendment, as Counselor Harpen amended. And that's a roll call vote.
Barbo?
Uh, remind me again, I don't even know where we are anymore.
Uh, it was Counselor Harpen's amendment.
Yes.
Uh, Bona?
No.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasan?
Uh, no.
Alaskowitz?
No.
Sapienza?
No.
Shade?
No.
Wilkinson?
No.
And Blackmer?
No. Motion to amend fails. We are back to the original motion to adopt the ordinance that's been published, passed through a second reading and published as required by law. Are there any more questions, comments on that? This is a roll call vote.
Barbo? Barbour?
No.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpin?
No.
Obasaham?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Seven yeas, motion carries. Council Paper 11,826, An Ordinance Amending Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Regarding the Various Fees Established in the City Code. Um, council, do these get flipped?
They look like they got separated somehow, maybe. I don't know.
Or was this, is there part of this?
I, I think, can I just?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
I, I think section 9,513 dash 31, or Paper 9,513 dash 31, is specifically for the transfer station fees.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
I was wondering.
And then the other one is the fees that we're doing as the, the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Okay, that's 790, wait, 11,790 we did, right?
Yep.
Dash two, we just did. I'm sorry, the pages are sticking together. 826, okay, so that's right. How, to repeat, Council Paper 11,826, An Ordinance Amending the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Regarding the Various Fees Established in the Bill, in the City Code. Councilor Bona, do you want to make a motion and?
Um, again, I'd hate to delay it, but let's, um, I'd, I'd, I'd make the motion to postpone till the second meeting of, of, um, March, sorry.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Council Sapienza, second. Discussion? Roll call vote.
Barbour?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpin?
Yes.
Obasaham?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Nine yeas, motion carries. Council Paper 12,191, Communication from Council Shade Requesting the Local Department of Health Review the Rules and Regulations to Address the Storage of Garbage. It was referred, voted to refer to Public Safety and the Board of Health. Do we have a motion on this paper? Or do we want to file the communication and get an update from Council Shade? Council Shade?
The, as far as I know, the Public Safety Committee and Board of Health have not met yet, so I think it would be appropriate to postpone until they meet.
Okay. Is that, they haven't, Councilor Sapienza?
Uh, okay, to date, we've had one meeting regarding, um, trash storage. And with the, I think the priority of looking at the taxi ordinances, we've kind of put that aside for the time being. We do plan to address it. I'm also planning on proposing an ordinance against feeding wildlife in the City of North Adams, which I think goes along with some of the discussion we had at that original public safety meeting back in, I believe it was the beginning of the year we had that.
Okay, so what do we, what date do we want to postpone this to?
Uh, let's, at this point, let's postpone this. I would say, at this point, postpone it to the second meeting in March.
Okay, is that a motion by somebody?
Second. That was a motion.
Okay, that was your motion.
That is a motion, yes.
Does that work for you, Council Shade?
Second.
Council Sapienza, Council Bona. Any more discussion on this? I will say that if you include birds in your wildlife, you're going to have a lot of unhappy bird people. This is a roll call vote.
Barbour?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpin?
Yes.
Obasaham?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Nine yeas, motion carries. Council Paper 12,218, Mayor's Communication Number 10, Requesting a Revised Taxi Ordinance by the Public Safety Committee. Do you, we have an update, and do we have ordinance, or we're waiting on that?
Okay, let me, uh, first of all, let me make a motion to postpone that to the second meeting in March at this point.
Okay.
Um, the update is that we are in the process of working on the revisions of the taxi ordinance. A ordinance turns out to be a little bit more involved than originally thought. We were looking at some of the language. I proposed, um, at last, the last public safety meeting, they, we had a hit list of items. We listened to Mayor Maxi, we also listened to Chief Wood and Lieutenant Beverly of the North Adams Police Department on their suggestions. And we'll be meeting tomorrow night, the Public Safety Committee will be meeting tomorrow night at 5:30 to discuss some of those changes as were discussed in the previous meeting. So we're, uh, in the process of working on that at this point.
Okay. So the motion is to continue to the, postpone, continue to the second meeting in March, which is March 28th. Everybody better eat their Wheaties that day, make sure they take a nap. Um, roll call vote.
Barbour?
Yes.
Bona?
Did we second that?
Council Bona did, I thought. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm mixing them up, I'm sorry.
You didn't second that, yeah.
Okay, can we have a second?
Second.
There should have been a, okay.
Barbour?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpin?
Yes.
Obasaham?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Did you tell? Apparently the Zoom is ending in three minutes because it wasn't set up in the, in the format that has an, has a longer period of time. Okay.
So how's that work?
Yeah, I don't know. Mayor?
Could we just take a two-second recess and then reset the Zoom?
Set it, yeah.
Um, yeah, we just finished voting on this, so let's take a, a minute, two-minute recess while we fix the Zoom.
Okay, we are back online. Okay, so that one. Review of the taxi ordinance, we already. Okay. Council Paper 12,235, Mayor's Communication Number 26, recommending the appointment of Lilly Marsow to the Cemetery Commission for a term to expire February 27th, 2026.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahen?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Without objection, I'll file a communication paper 12, Council Paper 12,236, Mayor's Communication Number 27, presenting an, oh, okay. An award from the United States Attorney Office, State's Attorney's Office to Officer Jonathan Boudreaux. Do you have anything to read, or are we just gonna?
At this time, because Officer Boudreaux is not available, I'd like to ask again to motion to file. Thank you.
Without objection, we'll file. Thank you. Council Paper, Council Paper 12,237, Mayor's Communication Number 28, recommending the appointment of Nicholas Reger to the Cultural Council of Northern Berkshire for a term to expire October 1st, 2024.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Oleskowitz, Counselor Bona? Discussion? Roll call?
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahen? Obasahen?
Oh, did he get disconnected?
Yep, we gotta call him again.
Just call him on your phone.
Can you hear us, Michael? Counselor?
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah, we're up to you on the vote on the...
Appointment of Nicholas.
Appointment, yeah. Did you hear it?
I did.
Okay.
And, yes.
Okay. Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Council Paper 12,238, Mayor's Communication Number 29, recommending the appointment of Kayla Valiers to the Youth Commission for a term to expire February 20, 28, 2024.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Excuse me? Nope.
I'm sorry.
Yep. Through the chair to the mayor. So I notice we have three being appointed to the Youth Commission. Is this a sign that it's gonna become active?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It is. We're working very hard at that.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Long time coming.
Yes. Long before my turn.
I'm fine.
Okay, roll call vote.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahen? Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Just for the record, Mike Boland helped write that ordinance, so we're going back a ways.
I remember.
Council Paper 12,239, Mayor's Communication Number 30, recommending the appointment of William Shanahan to the Youth Commission for a term to expire February 28th, 2024.
Motion to approve? Second.
Counselor Harpen, Counselor Shade? Discussion? Roll call?
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahen?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Council Paper 12,240, Mayor's Communication Number 31, recommending the appointment of Amanda Chilson to the Youth Commission for a term to expire February 28th, 2026.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Sapienza, Counselor Shade? Discussion? Roll call?
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahen?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Council Paper 12,241, Mayor's Communication Number 32, giving time to William Shanahan to provide a brief presentation about navigating the boards and commissions on our website. Without objection, I will file a communication. Mayor?
Sure. Counselor Harpen and I had a discussion in one of our meetings about how sometimes our website is difficult to navigate. While we're working on the overall site itself, Marie, Counselor Harpen, I'm sorry, had the suggestion of maybe we do a quick presentation of how people can navigate our site when it comes to boards and commissions. So that's something that's been on my to-do list, and now that I have an intern, William put his hand up and said he'd love to present before the City Council on this topic. So I'll turn it over to William.
Thank you.
Greetings to the City Council, residents in the gallery, and to the folks attending virtually. My name is William Shanahan, and I am currently a resident student at MCLA, and I am the intern for Mayor Maxi. Today, I'm here to present to you a presentation on vacancies on some of our city's boards and commissions, and how to, how one can fill a vacancy and help improve our city. So, first of all... Yeah, no, it's working, it's just a little late. Why are commissions important? Well, it keeps our city government functioning, and a well-run commission can keep our government running efficiently. It allows independent voices to be heard from both the community and folks who have special skills and knowledge. It provides community service opportunities for folks who have a sense of civic duty, and it allows fresh ideas to be suggested and voiced. And so, how would one join a commissioner board? Well, first off, you go to the North Adams City website, and you are going to go to the government symbol, and you're gonna click on that. And then, it'll create a whole section of options, and you're gonna click on Boards and Communications. Once you click on the Boards and Commissions, you're going to get a long list of the many boards and commissions. This will include the amount of seats that a commission holds, the length of a term, and, what is important to this presentation, a vacancy, the amount of vacancies. And, when you scroll down, you are going to see a section called Resources, and you can click on a link called Application. Once you get to there, you can fill out your, you can complete the application. Now, what information will you need? Well, you're gonna include your name and contact information, the desired board or commission that you want to apply to. You're gonna have to identify any potential conflicts of interest, as conflicts of interest are detriment to commissions. And, you're going to list any special skills and/or qualifications you feel are necessary to prove that you should be on a commission. Now, here's the fun part. Current vacancies. In the midst of creating this, there's already been a new vacancy made. So, it is constantly changing, so I recommend anyone who's interested to keep on the lookout for new opportunities. So, first off, we have the Airport Commission. Now, this is a very important commission. It sets rules and regulations for the use of the airport. It oversees maintenance, improvements, and expansions. It is a three-year term, and it is subject to City Council approval. And, currently, there are two vacancies. So, if you're willing, help keep our city's airports safe, productive, and soaring. Next, we have the Mobile Home Rent Control Board, which is responsible for rent regulation for mobile home properties. It is a five-year term. It is also subject to City Council approval, and there are currently two vacancies. A very important one. North Adams Housing Authority. Now, North Adams Housing Authority is responsible for the operation of our city's public housing. It oversees modernization, maintenance, and financing of housing in our city. It is involved in the hiring and evaluation of executive directors. It is also a five-year term, and it is also subject to City Council approval. And at the moment, there is one vacancy. So if you're willing, help improve our city's public housing. Now, this one's a fun one. The Tree Commission. It is responsible for the supervision, care, and preservation of ornamental trees, shrubs, and plants. It is also importantly involved in the beautification and/or removal of unmaintained plants. It is a three-year term, and this one is directly appointed by the mayor. There's currently two vacancies. It's really important to keep our city green and beautiful. Now, there's also the Windsor Lake Recreation Commission. It advises the Commissioner of Public Services on operations of Windsor Lake Recreation Area and the Historic Valley Park Campground. It is a three-year term, and it is also appointed directly by the mayor. There is also one vacancy, and I've heard that, you know, summer, well, we have to wait for spring, but summer is an important time for the Windsor Lake, and so it is good to fill out that vacancy. Next, we have the Youth Commission. The Youth Commission is responsible for providing an ongoing forum and for communication between city government and local youth groups. It works with the current youth programs, and it can make recommendations to the appropriate government officials. It's a five-year term that's subject to City Council approval, and there were 11 vacancies, however, it seems that that has been filled out partially. So, help support the youth of our city. Now, finally, finally, there is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This interprets North Adams zoning ordinance in appeals of denied building permits. There are, it rules on petitions for special permits and variances. It is a five-year term, and it is appointed by the mayor. And right now, there is one vacancy for the alternate member. Now, because the Zoning Board of Appeals is very important in its rulings, if a member of the board cannot be, cannot join, then an alternate member is tasked as a substitute. And so, that concludes... That does it for my presentation. I hope folks found this interesting, and maybe it might just inspire someone to join a commission or board that needs a new voice or a fresh idea. I wanna give special thanks to Counselor Harpen for coming up with the idea for the presentation, and I wanna thank the mayor for giving me the opportunity to speak to the city of North Adams on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Have to go back to the agenda. Licenses? Oh, wait, okay, where was it? Okay. Council Paper 12,242, Communication from Counselor Sapienza requesting the Traffic Commission investigate the parking situation in the vicinity of the corner market on River Street. Counselor?
Yes, okay. It's been noted, and this has been an ongoing issue in the area on River Street between Holden and North Holden Street, that there is parking allowed on both sides of the street at this point, at this time. It is a congestion point. There have been a couple of accidents. I know there was one recently. And I happened to see some feedback from several local citizens on the problem down there. It seems to be compounded in that area, and I, at this point, I'm asking that the Traffic Commission take a look at that and come back at some future date with a recommendation on that.
So your motion is to refer your letter to the Traffic Commission?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to refer to the Traffic Commission at this time.
Second.
Discussion, Counselor Harpen?
Yes. At the last Traffic Commission, which was last month, this issue was brought up, and there was a letter that was submitted after we had already had the agenda complete, so we did not get to discuss it. But there was a letter from former Counselor Bullett regarding the congestion and concerns on River Holden and North Holden Street, and it is on the agenda already for next Wednesday.
Thank you for that update.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Mayor, you wanna add something?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that when we did get, we did receive a couple of complaints in our office, and we did go out, and we realized that there was really no signage in that area that delineated between no parking to corner, 15-minute parking, et cetera. So we did put some signs up, and we think it's helped a little bit, but totally agree with both counselors and the concerns of the citizens that it is an issue that needs to be looked at.
I think it's sad that we actually have to put up a sign saying you can't park that close to a corner. It's state law, you're supposed to know it when you get your driver's license. But I'm sorry, I digress. Counselor Shade?
Yes. If it's already on the agenda for the Traffic Commission, do we still need a motion?
Doesn't hurt.
It doesn't hurt. Not only that, what's gonna happen is it generally will come back to public safety, and either public safety, if there's, if there's ordinance changes, like if we change footage to no parking, that's actually ordinance, so that would have to either go to public safety or general government, so...
But it is already on the agenda?
Okay.
For Traffic Commission?
Yeah, I guess then we're referring it to them with the idea that they would give a report back to us instead of just you guys talking about it. So that we can move forward, so that if we have to do anything. Would be my understanding, unless you guys wanna resend your motion and go on with it, I don't know what you wanna do.
At this point, I can resend my motion.
There you go.
Then it's file a communication without objection. Okay, let's move on to licenses. An application submitted by Matthew Christiana to be granted a license to drive a taxi cab for OTT taxi.
Motion to approve?
Second. Counselor Oleskowitz, Counselor Harpen, roll call?
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
I'm sorry. Counselor Shade?
Yes. In regards to taxi ordinance in general, we've recently enforced taxi ordinances on a taxi company. Yet, one of the most, one of the points that is currently in the ordinance is that applicants for taxis should be here in person to answer questions and be available. It's written in the ordinance, we have the paper here.
Well, then the ordinance hasn't been updated. We changed that a while ago.
Yeah.
Quite a while ago.
Would we be able to get an updated copy? Because the one that's being distributed specifically states in section that the applicant must appear in person.
Provide that to all the counselors, that would be, yep.
Okay, I don't know, I'm not sure where that, because that was, Counselor Marigan was on the council when that happened, so that was a couple of terms ago, so I'm not sure where that one got lost.
The one that's even in our package here, it's under Section 2314 Qualifications, and it specifically says that the applicants must appear before the council, that the license is being acted upon.
For? For the driver or the company? Is it a taxi company or a taxi driver's license?
No, taxi driver's license shall be granted, so for a taxi.
Okay, I'm not sure what happened. That was changed quite a while, because it was...
That taxi company representative shall appear before the City Council, so...
Okay, I'll have to look. Counselor Bona?
Yeah, I mean, I do remember when we eliminated that, and one of the reasons we did is because the taxi licenses were always at the end of the meeting. The taxi drivers would be basically sitting out there for an hour, two hours, for us to say yes or no. And it didn't seem fair, because we didn't do it and require it from any other people who were applying for things. So, I think that was why we, you know, if, if we saw there was something wrong with the form, then we would hold it off until it was correctly. But it didn't seem fair that they had to be here during the whole meeting, so...
It was also a hardship issue for drivers who had families, if they had kids, being here in the evening was difficult. I knew that was a big issue. Counselor Barbo?
Yeah, I just would like to support Counselor Shade. She's correct. That is what we were provided this evening as an ordinance, and if that's how it's written, we should be following that. I think there's a number of ordinances I've come across lately or people have brought to my attention that are not updated, and if that's what we are being distributed, then we should be following the ordinance.
Well, we're following what was voted. You just have to go back to the vote. I'm sure that Counselor, that Clerk Valiers will look it up, so, and make sure that it's updated. Because this was done, you'd have to go back, but it was when Counselor Marigan was on the council, so...
One of the things I'm finding with General Code, and I don't know how far back it goes, because I have noticed things even from, you know, 2017, 2000, you know, you go back to 2015, there are some things that haven't been updated that I'm gonna have to look through. We're gonna have to really dig through the votes that were taken at previous council meetings to make sure it updates, or that make sure it reflects the current ordinance situation. So, that's one thing that we're working on right now, but I'll get the most updated taxi ordinances for all of you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, any more discussion? We have a motion and a second? I'm sorry, Mayor, you wanna add?
I just chimed in for a second. So, I just wanna echo what Counselor Barbo and Clerk Valiers said. We have been finding that things that, in my time, that we've changed that haven't been updated. And then there's, you know, questions about this, and then questions about other ordinances. So it's really a project that needs to be hit quickly by the City Clerk's office. I know Josh has been working with General Code recently, but this is a perfect example, how we put something out there. People are inquiring about our community, and they're not updated. So, we need some help there.
Yeah, can I read, it's actually, if you, a license may be revoked or suspended if the North Adams Public Safety Department determines that a license is no longer suitable. Such applicant, and then the next parrot, or taxi company representative shall appear at which meeting the license is acted upon. It sounds to me like it's... Okay, I mean, I guess it's really weird, the way it's phrased. But I would, yeah, we'll have to look back. I'm trying to think when we changed it. I'm thinking we changed it in maybe 2014 or 15? I, I think it was when I was president. So, it would've been 14 or 15. Or maybe I was just presiding, I don't remember. But I'm sorry for that, and I'm not sure why these things are happening. Okay. Sorry.
I'll start over. Barbo?
No.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahen?
Is he still there?
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Epstein.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Application submitted by Oscar Melendez to be granted a license to drive a taxi cab for OTT taxi.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Is there a roll call?
Barbo?
No.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahen? Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Epstein.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Open forum, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. Please approach the mic, give your name and address for the record. You have two minutes, no personal attacks.
Robert Smith, I live at 163 North Street here in North Adams. I know that the retainables along the river in our city need some work, and that's true. But a few weeks back, there was an article in the Berkshire Eagle involving the dams, both in our city and Pittsfield. Now, we have two dams in our city. The one that I'm most concerned about is the one up near Mount Greylock. I'm just wondering, how often are those retainables inspected? Because if the one up at Mount Greylock ever gave way, it would flood the entire west end of Main Street and beyond. So I'm concerned about that, about these dams. So I hope that the city's gonna look into this and make sure that everything is secure. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Robert Cardamino, 173 Quincy Street. Recently, in the last several weeks, there's been two accidents on each end of the West Shaft Road. And in each accident, there's been two fire trucks attending that accident. And why are we sending two fire trucks when we only need one, and we really, at times, unless there's a spill, we don't need any? And now they're sending two? And also, the other day, I was at the Big Y, and there's a fire truck sitting there, and the firemen are going in, I think they were getting something to eat. If they wanna use, get something to eat, let them use one of the trucks, not one of them gas-guzzling fire trucks.
Well, since you don't know...
This is a waste, this is a waste of resources.
Cardamino, that's coming close to a personal attack.
What's this?
You're getting close to a personal attack. Make it quick.
There's no personal attack there. This is facts. Where do you get a personal attack? Who was I saying that got a personal attack?
Finish your statement.
What was the guy's name?
Doesn't have to be a name.
What was the guy's name?
Do you wanna finish, or do you wanna sit down?
I want you to sell me who the personal attack was.
You're attacking, you're attacking the fire department. It's not appropriate. Finish your statement, or sit down.
Well, let me tell you this. I'm gonna keep talking about the fire department until you do something about it. Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council?
Personal attack. You'll do anything to interrupt somebody.
Mayor's update?
Just to answer a little bit Mr. Smith's question about the dams, Just to answer a little bit Mr. Smith's question about the DMs, off the top of my head, they are inspected. I don't need to know the timeframe, but I'll get that for you. But we did recently receive what we call a DM and C-Wall grant. It's gonna evaluate and design the fix, and that will help us become shovel-ready when bigger projects come down the road. My only update tonight is somewhat good news. Our elevator is working again, so as you're scheduling meetings, if you'd like to use the second-floor conference room, you're able to do so right now. I'm hopeful that this is a fix, but it is possibly only a temporary fix, but it is safe and it is applicable at this point.
Committee reports in minutes. Liaison updates and counselors concerns. Counselor Wilkinson?